Ma'am, we do have to wear masks in here? Ma'am. We do have to wear masks.
You're gonna put a mask on? Yes, I will.
Thank you. Yeah, that's good.
No, I am tired. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Remind everybody that because of our COVID constraints and the board's policy, people must remain masked, properly masked throughout the meeting. So with that being said, I'd ask you all to please join us to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own. And then the agenda adjustments, I have nothing to say. Oh, is it not on? It says it's on. Still can't hear me? I've gotta hold it closer?
Yeah.
Alright. I'm sorry for that. Okay, no agenda adjustments for the night? Item 2.1, there came a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th. In lieu of seconding any questions, comments, changes? Seeing none, and all those in favor? At this point in time, this is according to board policy, we have a public comment. Period. I remind everybody that this is an opportunity to talk about items that are clearly on the agenda. We do allow other things that have to do with the school functioning to be mentioned, but it's more or less what I have on the agenda. But that being said, because there are a number of people here, or we have a number of people out on the school that may want to speak as well. We're going to, so that we can carry out our business as a task group here tonight. I will need to limit the public discussion period. Last meeting would be 30 minutes. We have a few more people here tonight, so I'd like to allow up to 45 minutes. I still like comments. Maintain two minutes per person. Please do not duplicate over and over the same comments that they, we will hear at each time. It's not a time for public discussion back and forth at the board, and it's time for the public to make their their comments. And so with that being said, as each of you approaches the mic or are on to talk to us, please identify yourself and your name and the calendar to a resident of, and then you'll have your two minutes to express your thoughts. Will the mic open? Ready, buddy? If you'd like to speak. Please keep your mask on. We'll be able to hear you.
That's why I'm here though, is because of the masks. You're forcing the government
Please put on your mask.
The government of our own, okay, we're under this status. Is trying to force our government to start, not everybody is doing so. I know everybody just really wants it. But now we're forcing masks on our children when technically it's supposed to be vaccinated, so what's the point? We're still having mask outbreaks. We're still having all kinds of other issues that are going on. So why are we putting this demand on our children? Can't we just see kids having their number fashion now?
Your comments, it's not worth it.
Yeah, well, I want to complain about stuff in my ID, obviously coming from a point of view. You know, our kids shouldn't be forced into any of this because of something else. Because most parents that I've spoken to and I know were on a plan, we're ready to draw our children. And shouldn't have. This is an amazing school system now, bro. One of the best to speak. And it's just, I don't know. Maybe it's wrong.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura from Savannah. So I was trying to get a good five, two minutes out of that. In kindergarten tonight, I'm shocked that we have so many healthcare professionals on the floor. I wasn't aware of the kind of community, medical doctors, that were able to go to the medical device for the public. Last thing you, our parents have a choice where to get a medical care for our children, like their physician, hospital, places like that. You're not fully health officials, you're not doctors, you're educators. Your job is to educate the parents of the private children in the Savannah area and the state community for their education. We get it. We see the news, we see the articles, we see the posts. We understand that the CDC has guidelines, and the school is mandatory against some of the guidelines and not just people in the faculty. After your kids to sit in a class or sit down today with minimal grace is unacceptable. And you're planning your discussion, and you can't come up with any other better ideas of faculty. You're not able to come up with a real plan than what are you doing on this board? There are a few other convulsions that the teachers speak about. I know in the past, if nobody could come on, nobody could come on, I didn't help myself, I even offered to turn eighteen, like Andy last year. And I think it will have us that, and we've got to get this here this year, and the past, I think it will have more, a little more complicated. Sorry to be kind, but I'm not going to speak without closing my eyes, I'm just removed. My eyes are closed. So they don't have that kind of the sixth grade classrooms, but not their home room, their lunch, gym, or other classes, just night and after community. I learned that some of the staff have not quite get that sunny, because their cameras are not turning. It is like full lunch, but not hot, or maybe it's cut lunch, but not cold, I can't remember. But it was certainly not unless sometimes they pray their food's on record as well, but not at school.
Last two minutes, so do you mind?
So So I happen to know that focus of the doctor and not having a sixth grade for killing social setting. I thought we had a doctor for killing, but maybe I'm confused, but that's not really their code. One thing I did want to find out was the research officer. There was a public meeting on it, it was about a space department. Mrs. Waterman did speak at that tonight, of how the district is having a thorough learning and
Your time is up.
And I wanted to thank you, Jen. I wanted to thank Jen for making the Savannah community aware that that's a critical need for our school. The sheriff's office said that nobody can be certain of that, I don't know how we can just argue with her, but that is a case of trying to get from the top of there, but that's on there. And so I assume that the discussion also will happen because we do have to increase our pages, that the staff is already going to be kind of like the seventy-five percent of that people talk of there.
Ma'am.
So naturally, I'll grab that for you, so English. I think I also have my two minutes, my two minutes, but I'll grab that for you, so. I just had, I just had to review the CPT meeting, I promote, box Friday. I just encourage you to review the participation on that, because it's a principal speaker. I think that was in there, Tony, I'm not really sure, probably a community student committee member. I encourage you to understand, we're acting for consistency, we're acting for choice, we're acting for collaboration. A few times I've heard from members of the board, that's in front of me, not all of you, but all of you, that you don't care who likes to. You don't care who people agree with you, you don't care, you don't care, you don't care. Is it really appropriate way to approach these type of level pressure? We can't, we can't for this either. Because you can't, you sit here because you care. Then if you don't care, you should wipe that door. And go knock here in your house, because you care, and then know that you care. Why can't we come together? We want to get to the end of this, right? We want them to be proud. We want them to stay on their football jerseys to school. We want them to go run with their friends that they have for years. We are your neighbor, we are your business owner, we are your friend and your family. So aren't you flagging and inspiring all mothers to achieve their purpose? Are you doing that by shutting down people that come and extract their ideas, their concerns, their approach? I promise you that these community members, neighbors, and friends are to be heard. We are here to take in seriously, and you work for us, our kids, our community. You are elected for that, keep that, and next time, I encourage members in our community to review your voting rights and take it into consideration on the next poll.
We're gonna, hold on one second.
Okay, sure.
Do we have a better answer that spoke up? Time located, we can't, nobody yet. Okay, nobody answered, so go ahead. Your name and town?
Yeah, my name is Deanna Gold, we are residents of Adams. I have two children in this world. Two and a half weeks resulted in one of them being close to on. Myself and my husband both attended the hours before schools. And I've always loved the safety and sense of community in small rural school district. But literally, I feel that both of those qualities are severely lacking. I see school board meetings on their states on the news, with parents ranting about conspiracy theories and screaming with their electric order. I think to myself, I buy my kids in our school district, where people would never get looked at, and a sad thing, I made you on. From adults coming to meetings and behaving in ways that are physically recommended for, if they ever acted in such a way at school. For humans to do the simplest task, to having your kids wear masks, to protect their friends and community, until all children are eligible for the option of vaccination. The FDA has a certification emergency to authorization for vaccinations for children very soon. And it's not as many as the prior asking through school for children are currently strictly on to be vaccinated until that option is available for families to choose. When my seven-year-old child was in post contact, the person he told me was hoping to give me a cancer. We shall all try to build more empathy for each other and set an example, our kids are watching. These meetings are upcoming, which we do, or available, forever be available, or doing anywhere. What you say and do matters. So I want to know, I always support full testing and universal masking for at least the middle and elementary schools for now, until parents have the chance to get their kids vaccinated, if they choose to do so. I also want to know that our community should be better than this. Thank you.
Hello, what happened?
I am a resident of St. Louis. I have a whole monitor. In studies regarding effectiveness on the past, as well as the transmissibility and back support, including the children. The CDC guidelines are early by the end of the year, states and evidence, studies and government, but it's massive. Yeah, the study started with a law code that, I mean, statements such as mask mandates appear to have to contribute to mitigation of the warranty and our warning to place masks without reviews. On the statements from these studies, these results are probable, not confirmed. Clinical studies are experienced and intended to add a medical help. They do not confirm anything. Not only is the CDC guidelines here misleading, which is also about us. The results tax court are required according to CDC data tests, or even if you're on the authority, require a parent's to allow it. If there are some success or requirement, are requested to provide by the board assistance of our chief board. Same CDC bodies also states evidence or studies suggest that staff to staff transmission is more common than transmission to students to staff. Staff to student, or student to student. School inventions should, any invention should include a venture share to serve whose transmission potential of staff numbers. Evidence states that staff to student, student to student transmission are not common in use of a source of the salary's coverage among children. Several studies have also included that students are not part of the source of the salary's coverage. Among all students who are studying. CDC can predict that she will serve statements supporting other studies to student, they're new. And she worked her hard, her children's, not a class.
Next two minutes, sir.
Take mine.
Alright. I'm waiting guys for the
Let's keep going.
I'm sorry?
She falls into her time, please, therefore I will finish her call. I'm gonna finish my
Take mine.
I figured you were gonna finish.
I wouldn't want to
Just really, you go along with it, let it finish.
Let it finish.
That means that we do four on four, twenty twenty. Face masks include cloth coverage. It's a device that covers the shoulders above, and may or may not be through their distribution, ah, tissues to lungs. The FDA, EVA, or face mask, is for a source of control. Source of control requires to use face masks to deal individuals' respiratory, if she's out of the transmission, for the effect individuals may never want access to the organization. They are not completely immune, that they are not subject to the body-based species' respiratory or for surgical masks. Face masks authorities under the EVA are seen as requiring that was not coming to intend to produce a surgical mask for my working area of protection. This is not safe or required by, that the product is intended for anti-microbial point of, or anti-microbial protection. Overdue uses of words for such as infection or infection or reduction, and it should not be used for particular protection. Requiring universal masking within school is required until we develop a license. Basically, you guys are asking us to do universal masking. And as we grow up, we are told in our schools, this is the goal of research, and always push forward. It's like you guys are all stuck, and stacking air, and you just want to listen to what the people them all up.
My name is Eric Daniels, I'm a nurse. I went to your activity from two and ten steps. After moving around for our own higher education, we decided to move back to the R support district. We did this because of the education we receive, and because of the huge sport that exists here. We started following the school board closely earlier this year on building construction we began. We were much shorter than we thought, but ultimately, I can hear you from the source of the change that you managed to. We understand widely the identity group of that. We continue to follow these, and we can satisfy about orders and many difficult city that are originally set. Last year, our white collar decided to redshirt, as a lot of pre-k students were identified. Our son not sending the pre-k physically uncertainly on COVID. This year, he's in kindergarten and loves it. He wears masks because our white collar decided that it'll last for, and maybe sugar masks. Because if he wears masks, he does have to be quarantined, if he's considered close to combat. I share this because at the end of the day, important children don't care if they're a mask or not. It is the personal influence and behavior that determines a child's level of perspective. Wearing a mask may cause distractions during the day, but it doesn't affect your child's ability to participate in class, and we see that time and time again. Masks have been worn on operating nerves across the world for as long as anyone can remember. If masks were unsafe during the whole war, then you're sure your Lord's son would have taken that case right at that. But with the current information being presented to us as community, for our children being in school, and fully supported, you're also masking children at schools. As much as I dislike wearing masks, just like the next person. Last week, and I watched a CPT meeting from Friday, and there was a discussion regarding pool testing. All of the pool testing options I'm just reading, and I do think it would be a great opportunity for our school to do it. I don't know if we have the resources, that for listening to that community conversation, that meeting. I don't think the teachers, the nurses, and all that we can bring outside, staff to even help us with it. Thank you. At the end, as a last remark, I look to the end of the wall, those that are powerful masks, those that aren't for masks, everybody for sharing, put a comment, say it. Thank you.
Nobody on, still? Well, those people said, everybody is ready for me. Nobody said in chat? Alright, are there any others who wish to address the public comment? No, okay.
Hello, my name is Mia Cody, and I'm with Wells. My daughter's in kindergarten, and I think I just wanted to echo the sentiment, we are in support of universal masking. All she wants to do is be in school. She loves school. She just wants to stay in school. She doesn't care about masks. And I just wanted to ask her, if this is what it takes to get her to stay in school, to protect her. I have a two-year-old daughter. She, she's a baby girl, she took kids from all the schools, and this protects her too. But right now, my kids can't get vaccinated, and I have the choice of what, and I have the choice I will. And for now, I at least, at least since the photographing for the kids who don't have the option for vaccination, and
Any others? Oh, you have someone on too?
Yep.
So Donna, if you'd like to speak?
Actually, I think you're calling on me, Derek Wollett from WERS.
Sorry, Derek. Hold on, let me change my speaker.
So I wanted to say that I got two daughters going to two different school buildings right now, and they both love school. We've had a lot of great experience with teachers. We're still pretty young right now. These experiences we can't have if we homeschool. However, I am pro-choice, which means we should have choices. I feel it's important to keep as many choices as possible as options, whether you want a mask or not mask, whether you want to vaccinate or not vaccinate. What do you want to learn from remote or not learn from remote? These just seem like the right things to do. Choices are what we're all about. The original plan, I'm a little confused on, I thought it was going green, yellow, red. Right now, both SPS and Libby Toz are in red, but my girls are still going to school, wearing a mask. Now, I believe that wearing a mask isn't the most healthiest thing, and I didn't want my girls to have to do it again. We went last year, two days a week, wearing masks. And at the end of the two days, my youngest came home every day with a rash on her face. And I don't want to do that again this year, and I didn't plan on doing it. I thought once we were in red, we'd be remote learning, which allows me not to put my kids in masks. With the way the plan was set up, it was going to be pretty quick that we were in red, so I figured we'd be remote learning and not in masks. As of right now, most kids don't wear masks properly. They have gaps under their nose, have gaps on the sides, they're always pulling at it, touching their face. I see adults this way too. I don't blame them, but it won't work like everyone says it will if we do this, which is what we do. A mask is a breeding ground for harmful viruses, germs, e. coli, strep, mold, and other fungi. If you have a child that's got a runny nose or a cough, and they're coughing in that mask all day, they're not breathing the fresh air they need to get better. Last year, our youngest went to kind, uh, pre-k, and there was a little girl from her daycare there. They were friends for about two years at daycare. It took them half the year to figure out who each person was because of the masks they wear. We can't learn from what we usually see as body language, facial expressions, how a teacher announces words. There's a lot that happens when that mask is covering up your face. I don't want my kids to be living in fear, because everyone thinks you're safer with a mask. I don't know if that's necessarily true or not, and on the box itself, it says that they don't prevent any infectious diseases. I think it's important that we all get the choice. Whether the choice is to wear masks or whether it's to remote from school, alls I know is, my only option shouldn't be to put my girls in masks all day. They love school, like I said. I want them to be able to go, but I'm not comfortable with them wearing masks all day. As far as mandates go, we flip-flop on the mandates. Sometimes masks should help, sometimes they don't, and it's like this with everything in life. The more and more science we go, the more we learn. I heard Pluto's not a planet anymore. Well, I went to school for years and Pluto was a planet. I'm not sure where that sits today. Alls I know is the parents need to have their rights and have the choices to make for their kids of what they feel is best. As far as the health choices, they should be up to the parents and the doctors, in my opinion, not the school board or the community. It should be individuals, and we need options. I thought the board needed our informed consent to require a child to wear a medical mask all day. Does the board need to provide advantages and risks of said medical mask? Is, I thought there needed to be an alternate option. Perhaps remote learning is that alternate option, but that doesn't exist right now for some reason. I believe the National Institute of Health has forty-six studies that masks don't prevent the spread of viruses, just like it says on the box. They do have twenty-six studies that show mask wearing could be harmful. And as far as breathing difficulties go, why would we have our kids suffering through breathing with this mask on for seven hours a day? I just want to say that I'm pro-choice. I think there should be options for all of us, whether it's to wear a mask or not, or whether it's to learn remote or not. I feel that parents should be able to make their own decisions. Thank you.
Like to speak? Sarah, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, I couldn't hear very well. My name is Sarah Chisholm, and I live in Litchfield. I have two students in the, in the district at two different schools. One has already been considered a close contact this year, and I think the one thing that I hope we can all agree on is that we want our, our kids in school. We'd rather have them in school than at home doing remote or at home being quarantined. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the DOE has said that if districts or schools implement universal masking, then our students don't have to quarantine if they're in a, if they're a close contact. So for me, I, I support having a masking mandate, a universal masking in our district, because I want my children to be able to keep attending school. And I also want to point out that when our kids are considered close contacts and they need to be at home, it's very difficult on the parents who then have to take time off from work to stay home with them. So it's just, I understand that masking is not you know, people don't want to mask and it's not popular, but I really feel like that's what we need to do if we want our kids to be in school. Thank you.
Any others?
Good evening, I'm in the room, I'm eleven, one, six, one, hundred and thirty. I'm also part of a CPT team. Which I'm actually ashamed of very well. Some of my concerns are, you guys, everybody's here tonight, and our concern is a COVID rate. But some of our administrative, your full name here, the team of call team, that was exposed and made aware of by those in charge, and they decided to allow those players to still go to school. If our main concern is keeping him safe, then something should have been done. Second concern, everybody here is concerned with COVID. I'm concerned that my first and second graders get picked up, and there's no asking who's picking them up. We do foster care, these, some of these children don't come from their homes, and there's a possibility of somebody picking them up that's not supposed to. And I was told that administration had too much on their safety check. That's a huge concern. Then in school, pre-lee, my middle schooler called twice now to pick up my son, who was not at school. Was told, we don't have a way to attend it, all we know is that the work is being done, whether that's in home or in person. I'm concerned of fire or a mass shooting, and nobody knowing where my child is. I think those are the things that are getting this, they're quite important, and I have to spend the CPT meeting. I emailed the CPT meeting, and there's somebody who's constantly telling people that they I emailed the CPT meeting and there's somebody who's constantly telling people that they need to stop talking. Majority of those CPT meetings are not, are not very effective because human error is way off. So here tonight, I think it's about who services the concerned parents, the concerned teacher. They even don't matter, they matter to me. And I, I hope you're, I hope your parents don't have any. And it's time that those things start to be fired. Thank you.
Any others? I have Tracy Brancourt online.
Yeah, hi, my name is Tracy Brancourt. I'm a resident of Sabattis. And my granddaughter goes to Sabattis Primary. She's in first grade. She just started this year. And because of a COVID incident at the school, she went to school eight days and then was off a whole week because there was somebody, an adult with COVID in the class that there was no masking. I understand people's willing to want to make a choice and I get that. I, you know, I know this is America. We do have that ability to choose. But to the gentleman who said about the health choices of his own kids, well, what about my, my children? My daughter has a five month old baby at home. So if my granddaughter gets COVID at school because somebody isn't wearing a mask and brings that home to the five month old baby, that's detrimental. I think if you, I think this is so much about the parents. I think if you ask the kids, and I've asked my granddaughter if she minds wearing a mask during the day, she could care less. She just wants to be in school. And I, I think the parents, we're making such a big deal out of this where kids really don't care. They just want to be in school. So, um, I thank you for your time and that's all, all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Katie Wollett online. Okay, Katie, if you'd like to speak.
Hi, yeah, my name is Katie Wollett and I live in Wales with my husband and two daughters. Um, I just want to say that, um, I don't believe mandating masks is the right option. I think we should be up to make our own decisions. If you want to wear a mask, you wear a mask. If you don't, you don't. We live in America and we have that freedom. I, I don't think there's any authorization for the RSU to put our children in a mask. That's a medical device and nobody's authorized you guys to be up to do that. I just want to let you know that we don't believe in wearing masks. If you want to wear it, you should wear it. If you don't, don't, but we should have the choice. The reason our children don't mind is because they don't know any better. They're looking for their parents for influence. And I don't know, I just don't think that we should be forcing them to wear a mask when there's other things that they could be getting from wearing a mask. I've seen numerous times children drop their masks on the ground just to put it back on their face and wear it for several hours after. What about other diseases and viruses that they can get from touching their mask over and over again? E. coli, fungi, molds, which are, are also harmful to our children. I think it's against our constitutional right and it's against our First Amendment to force our children to wear masks. If you want to wear it, wear it. It's your choice. If you don't, don't. We live in America and we should be free to make that decision. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a person who spoke before was speaking, and I don't think that is the meeting where. I have a track on the second chair, and I have left. So. Well, we're listening, but then I'm going to have to allow everybody to speak again.
Hey, if it takes still two, it takes still two.
They have the right to.
We've been a year and a half.
Isn't that what these need to, this is my first time, but aren't these what these needs are about?
A little compassion.
He would be. That's what I raised there, we need.
So at this, at this point, I am going to deny. In keeping your fairness of all speakers. So is there anybody else?
All right, I can't keep my mouth shut anymore. My name is Veronica Dumeck, I'm from Litchfield. I am a teacher at Litchfield and I have been there for 23 years. And I'm telling you, masks, I don't like masks, but I would rather have my kids in my classroom with masks on so I can teach them because when they are remote. Last year, I had kids that weren't paying attention. We come back, they're low with them, but they laugh. So whether we have to wear masks or not, I don't care because I just want my kids to come to school because these are the kids that are going to take care of us when we're older. And I don't want them at pre-k level in first grade. So whether it's masks or no mask, I don't think that's a big deal. What I think is a big deal is that we need to abide by whatever the protocol is, no matter who it is. If it's 10 days, then everybody needs to do it. But whatever you say has in place, that's what we need to follow. Whether it's masks or not, it doesn't matter. I just feel that the kids need to be at school. And if you don't want your kids to wear masks, my feeling is homeschool them now. Or find somewhere else.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing that I will close this public comment period. And we'll move on to petitions and communications.
I have none this evening.
Go to five, 5.1, super tennis.
Um, I've got a pretty. I've got a pretty quick report tonight. Obviously, things are very busy right now. Look at our administrative spaces, they're pretty tired. It's been a lot going on, managing a lot. So, you know, looking at everything there is to do in school and COVID and everything else, I, my hat goes off to them because they are doing heroic things, just as our teachers are. Secondly, I want to let all of you know that this week we hired a few bus drivers. We're actually up to three this week. Got another one in the pipeline, I believe, correct Glenn? Yeah, so that is good news. I want to thank Larry and Glenn and their staff for all they've done to get our runs back up and running and more efficient than they were before. Obviously, you know, I've been out and about to schools. It's nice to see our schools full. It's nice to have kids in school. It's nice to see them doing the things they did before. Lastly, I want to make you all aware that we're dealing with something specifically of middle school and high school. The thing called devious leaks. I'm sure you've probably seen it on news. And, and it's, it's a pretty frustrating thing. We've got students destroying bathroom equipment left and right. I know that Ben and Jenny and Marco and Sam are chasing this down like crazy. I would ask, you know, parents, please talk to your kids about this. You know, I had a conversation at my dinner table the other night. My 12 year old stepson thought it was hilarious. I promptly reminded him that it's not. So, you know, TikTok's an interesting place. If you've never been there, I personally have no use for it, but you should probably check it out because there are things that kids are learning on there that you may not like. So, other than that, that concludes my report. No, I do have, uh, three appointments. Leo Labby, bus driver, Justin Vogel, custodian with Tozer, and Lucas World golf coach. No questions, I'll tell you. Questions? Alright, thank you. By now, your report is in the package and we'll have our committee reports will be discussed further. Principals' reports. Who's leading us off tonight?
Anyways, Doug, thank you very much for a couple of moments to share some things that are happening at Oak Hill High School. First up, the freshman team hosted a debate on top of the Clean Energy Network Corridor. Freshmen teams learned about the quarter of school content areas, which opened a debate between Mr. Ben Dudley from Maynard's for Clean Energy Jobs and Mr. Ken Ackley, who's a former state representative. And then it's us, our science teacher here at Oak Hill High School for initiating starting opportunities for our students. Second up, we have recently certified our graduation reports with the DOE. And I'd like to announce our four year graduation rate has increased from school year 1920 at 83.65% to school year 2021 at 89.47%. Our graduation rate has consistently increased in the time of every year of high school. And I would like to thank all of the staff at Oak Hill for their efforts and the key support from Central Office, the Board, and school community. Last but not least, it is homecoming week at Oak Hill High School. And we've had a number of press updates, including Music Monday, Tribute Tuesday, A Wacky Wednesday, Pro-Bet Thursday, and Fun on Friday. Spirit boards are being built, which are themed paintings to be judged at the end of the week. We have a pet rally on Friday, hopefully outdoors on the football field. We'll see how the weather holds out on that one. And a dance outdoor under two majestic tents. Should be lots of fun. And just to, you know, because you guys are wondering about this, sports, right? There's no league for bunses. Here we go. In first place, we have the seniors, second place juniors, and third place, our sophomores and freshmen. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge that not all of our student body is able to participate in homecoming this week. Through the close contacts, I want them to all know that we miss them and aren't thinking of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, guys. So the middle school, we have, we have some wrong things. We were the first to go through the color code system, which is very interesting and exciting. But even, even with kids being out with quarantine, we still had a 96%, attendance rate, which is pretty exciting. We are keeping kids safe and we're trying to keep them in school at the same time. We've unloaded and loaded over 400 cars while the busing was out. And even with that, we did over 98% attendance rate, which is pretty exciting. I can't, it's huge enough. So part of, uh, living here and very proud of our community getting together and applying together and getting into school. It's very, very exciting for all of us. Uh, some of the education teachers have pulled together a member of 9/11 unit where kids have studied the causation of the war in Iraq, as well as the history, and put together a common project of having a car wash. Where a lot of our local community sent vehicles over, a lot of veterans sent their vehicles washed. We got the SWAT vehicles from Lisbon Com to come over, which is pretty exciting. But we gave back to our community when that was a fairer unit, which is pretty exciting for us. At the primary school, we've gone for our community meetings. We created our vision statement for the year, working with the first and second graders and unpacking what it means to be a student at Spash Primary School. Our vision this year is a place where students are kind, safe, and are happy to learn together. I'm very excited about that. It's been a lot of fun, unpacking how to be socially, emotionally together as a school. And again, you have the focus of being students first. Again, with the tenants with busing, we had over 80% of the kids in the school, which is pretty exciting. I think, thanks again to the community for dropping kids off, which is really great. One thing I need to help with something, we have a thing called FRAM, so free reuse lunch forms. And I don't think everyone understands how important those are. They help us buy better food for our kid. The more those documents we give back signed, the more money we get from the state to help us with the food program. Likewise, it also helps us with Title I. It allows us to have assistance for media, for math, for our kids at the most need. And without those, without those forms to be back, we're going to lose that funding. And right now, we're shy of about 75 forms. A little, little less than half of the student population of primary schools. So I've sent alerts home, but if we can just help us out by giving us forms signed, that's, that'd be great. But, uh, you know, overall, things are going fairly well. We have the passive glitches, but we're saying assistance to take care of that. And, uh, you know, anyone has anything to say, you can come, you can call. We're here for everybody.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good evening. Libby Tozer, last week at Picture Day, that was fun, adorable, still at pre-k, and we're just coming to all of that stuff. Fun to see them sit there in style through that. We've had a few community meetings at Libby Tozer so far this year. We created a school vision, which can be drawn from that process. It's amazing to see all of those kids sitting together and participating in a fun way, lots of laughs and smiles. We're just getting closer to wrapping up our local assessment window. Next week at Libby Tozer, for some lots of assessing, we'll have great data to use to inform our instruction as we move forward. And our picture day is October 4th, so that's right around the corner. Our first assembly will be next week, so we're looking forward to the first one that we have in the whole of the year. We are also wrapping up local assessments there. We will have the state assessments starting, that window opens on October 4th, from the MEAs. That's the same this year, but it's the same place, not just in the spring. Cause then it's been going out, Mr. Point's going up into the school trail. He's purchased a lot of conferences for the budget this year, teaching kids different skills at that. They're looking at beer tax, that's been kind of fun to see. Mr. Jeff loves it when we have our parents show a little early to pick up a kid on their way out on turn and class, but he's getting to see that trail as well. So that's been, been fun. It's a nice little, you know, a nice little area to have in the backyard of the school. I also want to thank our parents. I cannot believe, I expected the school to be semi-empty for the three days we didn't have buses, that people wouldn't be able to change their schedules on a, on a whim. And, and get the kiddos there, but we were almost at full capacity. That was so impressive. I enjoyed creating people in the morning and in the afternoon when they came and picked their kiddos up. So thank you all for all of the hard effort put into that. We didn't miss much of a beat during those three days and the kiddos that couldn't make it in were home participating in the practices that we used. And then I'll just back up Mr. Wilson with the FRAM paperwork. So just if you're not sure if we filled it out, please call Janice or Kate and double check and they'll, they'll find out how, they'll let you know how to get that information in.
And that's the free reuse lunch.
Yes, thank you.
Paperwork. Thank you. Do I have a student up yet? Okay. I don't believe there are any other reports there on our. Although, the old business, 6.1, some update. Alright, so I will, I will handle this today. Just want to share my screen. I'm going to be broadcasting. What's that? Got one going. Will that screen work for everybody here? So we can go just with the one that said it. Trying to figure it out. There we go. Okay. Alright, so as you're all aware, and for those of you who don't know, we post these meetings online. Watch them, they're actually up the same day. The CPT team did meet on September 17. Most attendance. So first thing we did, we have agenda, things to look at, dashboard review. If you know on our website, you can have dashboard, that this are, our number of cases. We also have our vaccination rate for our staff, things like that. So we took a look at that. We reviewed the US CDC guidance versus the main standard operating procedures. We talked about quarantines, universal masking, testing, and pool and buy next now testing. Kind of kicked around the president's plan. We're waiting on more, more information from that. We talked about updates to our current plan and about vaccination things. So currently, for 15 days of school, we've had 18 positive cases, which has come to 246 individuals and that staff and students have been quarantined. I think that's a pretty large number. It was staggering to me when I saw it, you know, like that. So the question became, what can we do now? And I think we've all said it, you know, our main goal is to ensure that as many students can attend school for five in-person days as much as possible. And, and really, you know, to do that, we have to take a look at what the exemptions are to quarantine in school. And so the CPT looked at that and is recommending the following adjustments. So first, an update to the plan. So at a bare minimum, an update to the plan to make the red designation a little clearer, but that will be in a minute. Secondly, was considered universal masking. Secondly, was considered universal masking to reduce the quarantines for students in school. Third, consider pool testing to catch the spread earlier and to also mitigate the need for the people who participate to quarantine, and then offer for offering vaccine clinics for eligible individuals. So first off, the plan, and when I say at a minimum, one of the things that we need to think about is if we go to universal masking, if that decision's made, the plan becomes particularly vulnerable. You don't need to play, because universal masking does away with the need to have a status, you know, the red-yellow green system. But the recommendation to change would be to add a line down at the bottom that says the school administration will determine which cohort, class, grade, or if the entire school needs to quarantine due to the types of cases presenting at the time. That, we talked about that a lot, to make that a little clearer, I think that's a lot of confusion in that, and I apologize for that. But that, like I said, that's at a bare minimum. We then talked about universal masking, the CPT is recommending that before go-to-universal masking. And it basically means so that students don't have to quarantine from school. It's important to note that this is only for students, it does not affect staff. But basically, there's this nice little chart the Department of Education has put out for us. If we participate in mandatory masking, students can continue to attend school if they are close to home. And when we think about that, think about that need to be five days in-person instruction and not have our kids constantly out of school. I think that's, that's huge. That's, that's been our commitment all along, is to be a five-day session. I think it's important to note, this is not something we made up. This is straight from the Department of Ed, is that if, if you use the mandatory masking exemption, students can still come to school, but they cannot participate in universal masking. And that's what this chart talks about. So they are, the CPT is recommending universal masking. Next, we talked about pool testing. Pool testing, and the CPT is recommending that we sign up and participate in pool testing. So if we participate in pool testing, the students and staff that do participate do not have to quarantine from school. They also can attend school-based activities if they, so basically that would mean at the high school, middle school, period or after-school activities, they could still attend those if they participate in pool testing. And again, it's another way to keep our students in school five days. I think it's also important to note, this is one way for our unvaccinated staff to not have to quarantine from school. So if our unvaccinated staff participate in pool testing, they do not, they can still continue to come to work in universal masking.
Any questions?
Sure.
So for clarification purposes, if we go the route of having universal masking and we decide to have pool testing, pool testing is done with permission?
Yes, right, permission.
Okay, and if that is the case, if a student is participating in any sort of after-school activities, athletics, clubs, anything with that nature, if they are part of universal masking and pool testing, does that allow them to continue to participate in those activities?
Yes, it does.
Even if there's potential exposure?
Even if there's a potential exposure, so they may attend school-based activities.
What about, what about outside rec?
Outside rec, they cannot, they still are community taught.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what if a parent says not to?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I just got a question about it, that was all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll probably cover that, hopefully, it's approachable times.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I'm gonna go. Yep, so pool testing, how does pool testing work? So, self-swab, so the first thing is five to twenty-five students in a pool, they self-swab their nose and drop it into a vial. That vial is then sent off to a lab by FedEx, and the lab runs it. Couple of days later, we get the test results back. If there are positive test results in that pool, we then have to binax now test every student in person in that pool to identify the person that has, has got positive for COVID-19. Once that happens, we identify that person, that person is then removed from school for, for their quarantine period. So, and then we still have to test another, that is five days after?
You get a set date every day, every week, so if you're Tuesday school, you'll get a test date then for Tuesday. So that when you sign up, if you sign up for pool testing, the CDC tells us when our day of testing will be.
Then it'll tell us when we have to follow up with binax tests.
The follow-up is forty-eight hours after the test, so if you swab on a day, it's all forty-eight hours, you do the binax for next.
So, you know, it is labor-intensive. The company that does it does provide some folks to do it, but we would also have to provide some folks to help that. It requires about three people per pool. But again, it allows the opportunity for students to not have to quarantine.
And so, in order for pool testing to be viable, it requires thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
And that's thirty percent of the building with parents' permission, obviously.
Parents and staff. Yep, so thirty percent, I think that's important to note, that's not thirty percent of the district, that's thirty percent of each district. So, if you have a hundred students and staff in the building, if thirty of them sign up for pool testing, those thirty qualify for the exemption.
Right, so it's only those that are being in the pool that are signed up, that are being tested that, there's no quarantine. If they're not part of the pool, they're in close contact. But if they're universally masked, they can still come to school, right?
So. So, the other thing we talked about was vaccinations. Talking about offering vaccination clinics here, I know I talked to our nurses and nurses met today, looking at how we could do that. Partnering with Midcoast, they are working on that. I think, you know, we've seen the news lately that five to eleven is going to become available. When that happens, we will definitely be offering a clinic for that as well. So, you know, ultimately, the CPT spent a lot of time working through this, and they are, they are recommending at a minimum that change the plan, but more strongly, universal masking and testing.
Can you pull that to the other?
Yep. Sure.
Can you hear? Be speaking.
So asking for those to be put back on, help clarify. So there's a line that's put back in the market that's universal masking. So if, if ours decides to open that, we decide not to do that. If there are also orders in us, then we can't put it back. It moves that those not to have.
Quarantine, you are correct.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right.
That also moves sports too, right, you're quarantined, you're in quarantine period.
You, you got it, yep.
Thank you.
Unless they're participating in pool testing. School-sponsored sports.
Got it, thank you so much.
All right.
So, one more question. If you thought more than thirty percent for school?
Yep, absolutely. The CDC says to be one-hundred percent effective, seventy-five percent is the number. But the DOE has, along with main CDC, has set thirty percent as the number.
Thank you.
Right, so if we don't get thirty percent, then the pool testing is invalidated, and we're not, you know, we got twenty-nine percent participation. It's like having zero percent participation. So, it will take by and by the parents and the community to allow their student to be part of the pool and be tested. If there, we can put everything in the process of getting set up, because there is a delay in getting going. During that time, we can find out and send out the permission slips, try and send out some information on pool testing to help educate the community members that aren't listening tonight, a little bit more about pool testing, and even those of us who are here, are here about it. And then we get those back and see if we have the thirty percent. If we don't have the thirty percent, then we can pull the plug before we go down the road too far. And if we do, then we know that we'll be able to continue on, and we won't delay for a couple of weeks while we're waiting to see if we have thirty percent to try and get things going. The sooner we get it in place, the sooner that those in the pool can reap the benefits of the pool testing. So, we don't want to delay it.
It is a three to four-week onboard process, but one of the things that comes with that is priority with binax now testing. We have been doing some of that in our offices right now for on-the-spot in the nurses' offices, but they are hard to come by. In the last month, I've ordered six hundred tests, I still haven't got them shipped in yet. We've been very lucky with our partnership with Lisbon, they loaned us tests on two separate occasions now, so hopefully we can see those in the day. They are. Yep. Definitely. Yep.
And then, another question about that.
Yep.
About hearing, how's that?
If, if we did that, we, we'd obviously take up the offer from the company that's doing it, and would also bring in some outside folks using that company's funds.
One second, please. Any other questions from the board?
Maybe on the first slide, these are for these majors.
Yes.
We actually have two students that have been in hospital since fifteen days, that have been in school.
Three hours.
Other questions from board? All right, so it has been the board's policy in the past, and I would, and this is an important topic. So, what we've done in the past, and I'd like to offer that opportunity again tonight, is that the board has kind of finished its preliminary discussion of this. The next agenda item is going to talk about approval of, excuse me, possible board action. So under this part of this brief of the CPT, instead of under the next one, we consider the board action. I would like to allow an opportunity for people to make brief statements or ask questions, brief questions about these recommendations, so that we can have a clear understanding. And so I'll open that up for those who may have a question about this or a brief comment, so that the board can hear your comments specifically about this recommendation that the CPT is making to the board, and then after that, the board will come back and have another opportunity to ask any other follow-up or final questions that the board might have, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the possible board action on the CPT recommendations. So, we'll have, we're actually, this is a discussion about the CPT meeting and its deal. The next item will kind of be much briefer in that if we're going to make a change, the board will have to move to whatever change they want to go and make. We'll have our brief discussion on that, and then we will vote on whether that motion is going to be accepted, the policy changed or not. So that's the way the flow will go, it allows for input from the community. Again, please. Brief comments, questions, we'd like the questions, we want people to be clear why we post the meeting when we're not required to. We do that for transparency, so that people will know what our process is and we go through. All right? So, anybody that has a question, well, here on Facebook, or Zoom rather, not Facebook, Zoom, please, raise your hand, come to the mic so we can hear you, and let us know at this time. So, open it up.
I have a question going back to the masking, because I just want to be.
Can you use the mic so not only can we hear, but people online can hear as well?
I just want to be very clear that I'm understanding the masking. Obviously, we are breaking protocol, which my son has experienced, has happened with breaking protocol, which I'm being scandalous, so we in terms of having to quarantine from lack of protocol. But you and I are obviously, we're always going to be that way. So, my notion is, because I was told that I want to be sure that that will play your, if my son is masked properly a hundred percent of the time, he will not have to quarantine again, regardless of other individuals in the class. There's one question, Kathy, are you Kathy? Yeah, one question, Kathy, I got a email saying that if my son was masked a hundred percent of the time correctly, he would not have to stand.
So, that's correct, for school hours, so a hundred percent masking allows you to come to school. However, the child, if they were in close contact, would not be allowed to attend out-of-school activities, so co-curricular, extracurricular, rec. You are quarantined, you are allowed to attend just school hours, not in after-school. Regardless of what's in the year or relative to that. And as part of, and I think this CPT talked about that twelve-step process is, we do have people that are vaccinated and unvaccinated and double-check masking. So if you are a hundred percent masked, regardless of how board recommends, whether universal or not, towards achieving that, you fit in that category under your report.
After-school sports too?
I think I heard somebody say, is that for school sports too?
So, if you are wearing a mask, you need to attend school, you cannot attend school sports, rec, or school other school activities. You are allowed to attend school hours, so it's a good one.
How good that you have that toolset?
It's the only thing that allows you to attend co-curricular, extracurricular activities based on this chart.
So it'll allow you to make a decision.
Okay, hold on, please, we can't have back and forth. We got a lady up here that is waiting to go and ask her question. So let's, if you want to speak, please, but we gotta, otherwise, people out in the online camp hear the questions, right? If they're not using the mic.
So, just in regards to testing and the vaccination, there is that large vaccination clinic in the harbor that anyone, that has any criteria of age for taking their twelve-year-old or older at any point, you can get vaccinated. So, I guess I just don't understand the resources of that, that you can, or that you haven't been able to do that. I think the same thing, with testing, everyone that has to go get a test can go to any well-resured care, or something like that too. So, I guess, you know, kind of a resource as well, if you're concerned, to make sure that our.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Natasha, I am actually a stock director, and I'm the Vicky of the board. So my question to you is how you can tell the kids that are fully masked, a hundred percent attended, they can go to school sports, but they can't do anything outside of rec? How is it that it's your choice, or they can't do it outside of school? It's all about.
It's not my choice plan, I'm just following the means SOP.
It's a recommendation.
This portion is the requirement, is the requirement we follow the SOP. It is a recommendation of the board to determine what exemptions that the board and the school department want to follow. Currently, in our current plan, we are only following number one, two, and five. We have not, we've looked at three, four, and that's what the CPT today is looking to see if the board wants to explore exemptions three and four. I'm just following the, I'm just answering the question, why do we think that it would be okay? If they can go to school sports, but then they can't do anything outside that? It's not my personal opinion, I'm just following.
So they can't go to school sports with their mask either?
No, they can't.
Unless they'll do pool testing.
Pool testing.
Pool testing allows them to participate in activities.
Well, then how come in the seventh and eighth grade football last week, I had a coach ask all the kids to raise their hands, who's vaccinated and they may, and who isn't? They need all the unvaccinated kids be, first of all, you can't ask that. It's a rec one, you can't do that. It's a violation of your rights. This is a form of represent.
Right, I think that's the definition, right? For rec, rec going out, where are you, a rec tester? And to be more aggressive, can you report, I assume, or maybe some jobs that are running these people's work policy, or some sort of other reason?
Right, they should be able to tell the kids if they can play rec sports or not.
Right, maybe the kids are, they go to school.
Not if they have a mask on, that's my point. Great, but I'm sure that's part of the final debate.
Okay, have someone online?
Yep, let me see. Go ahead, Billy.
No, not, not there?
My apologies, there's a delay. It's hard to hear it on the Zoom. I just wanted a clarification on what you showed us with the universal masking versus the pool testing. I understand the difference between the two, but is, I didn't hear an option to.
Cut out on.
Sorry. So the question was on, on number three, is there an option just to do pool testing? And as a follow-on to that, is there any consideration to allow children who have tests outside of this pool to then return if they have a negative test?
Okay, so I can answer the first part. There is an option. There's nothing that says that we have to do universal testing or pool testing. The board could decide to just do pool testing and only get it benefit without universal masking. There wouldn't be as near as much benefit because it would only affect those in pool testing. If they weren't, were asked, they'd still be quarantined. All the other students that would might have some kind of close contacts. So we could still have some problems there, so that. Now, as far as the second part of the question, which is a little bit outside of my area.
Sure.
So, I'm going to take this back.
When it was about an option, a stop.
Yeah, so in the SOP, you cannot test out quarantine. This is one area that actually, we follow the US in kind of, so last year we had a DME framework that we followed in the office. So in the SOP, you cannot. And then we also had how we have to handle the positive cases. This year, the main season of a lot of discrepancies. This year, the department has taken on the US CDC framework and their guidance. However, in quarantine, the US CDC, as they've updated on nine thirteen, still recommends that quarantine is fourteen days. However, the main, when we follow the positive cases in quarantine based on our SOP, they suggest ten days. We are still doing ten days, but you cannot test out of quarantine.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So if they are mandated to wear masks and say they do that for sports still, can they do sports with the masks on or no?
No, so there's, there, let's keep pool testing up. There's two problems with just universal masking. The first one is you can only do school-based, school-hours activities if you will be deemed in close contact. The other component is that exemption does not qualify for unvaccinated staff. So universal masking, if the student only, unvaccinated staff will still have to do a quarantine.
And I just want to get this straight, because there was questions back there. It's the pool testing that they do sports if you participate in the pool testing.
And you used the thirty percent question.
And it's not just sports, it's all go or extracurricular.
But outside of school.
Drama, some of those parts and things. Not rep, not community based. You're not in charge of community based. You can only say, well, you're allowed to participate in school and what is a school affiliated program. So masking, just school, pool testing, you can do both in and out of school affiliated programs.
Alright, any others? So some good questions, some good comments. I appreciate that feedback. I'm sure all the board members do. It helps us in, in our discussions and deliberations. So at this point, I'll come back to the board. Are there any other questions on kind of this part of it, which was the, the update of the CPT? Alright, so that's it. Then we will move on to six point two. So this is a possible action, board action on CCP recommendations. So if there's a board member that would like to make a recommendation on changes to the plan, I would ask that they make that motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go with universal masking and a full testing program.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? Alright, so by doing these, by doing these, then the plan as we have it is obsolete. We won't have to worry about that color code and depending they change to the red, which has been confusing. So one other, would it, well, not part of the motion, so. My question is, is when would we want this implemented? I would suggest.
I would suggest as soon as possible.
I would think Monday to allow those who are not in favor of sending their children masked to have an opportunity to find an alternative, if that's their choice.
Yeah.
Alright, hopefully that Thursday and Friday this week. Delaying it those two days will not endanger the safety of any staff or student unnecessarily. Okay, so we have a motion to move to universal masking and pool testing. Universal masking would become effective on September twenty seven. And pool testing, once we can get the required number of participat, participants and it put in place with all its supplies. That's good. Okay. Understood. Alright, I hear your, your thoughts. Are there any other comments on the motion?
I would draw a plan also.
Okay. Alright, fine, thank you. Any other comments?
I would say that I, at the local community, we've had to, their children have been deemed close contacts. And I have people from the community who have young students in the school who have asked for clarification. Sorry, I'm Rachel, Kathy, or Andy, for the very clear guidelines in which we all have to be functioning. And as I have said before, this is like trying to nail jello to a tree. And the tree keeps moving, if that's possible. We are committed, and I will say this again from last time, we are committed to have your children in five days a week. And if that means that they have to wear a mask, you know, my kids in college, and I'll be honest, it was a concern of, are you going to go back to school because you got to get a shot? Or are you going to opt out of your scholarship? The choice was made, she went back to school. But even in the university model, folks, everybody inside every single building has to wear a mask, regardless of whether or not you have had a shot or not. So the bigger picture here is that we are committed to having your kids in school. We want that. And if it means that they have to wear a mask for their case, as a parent, if I have a kid in this school, I say, no, I don't care. If it means you're going to be in school, let's do it.
Alright, any other comments? There is a motion on the floor, this is comments on the motion. Those who watched the tape of the CPT meeting have heard this. For those who don't, this is, I'm trying to prevent parents out there who don't expect it to not have to suffer what I did a number of years ago. I put my firstborn son, firstborn child to bed perfectly healthy one night, the next morning I found him blue, not breathing in a pile of bubbles. And we were able to resuscitate him, but he suffered a lot of brain damages or lack of oxygen. I don't want any parent to have to go through that. About seven years later, we had, he died as my wife was feeding him lunch, stopped breathing. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if a child is, we have to do what we can do to protect the vulnerable children that are in our care. And as a school board member, it has been my goal for the number of years that the Wales residents have given me the honor to go and serve on the school board and try and provide the best education that we can afford to our students, and that means keeping them safe. So I support the universal masking. The pool testing is a, is an additional step to allow the students to be more involved in their activities and in the community. And for those reasons, I would support the pool testing. I'm not sure that it's keeping them that much safer in the school, but it's allowing them more participation, more exposure, and to do things that they want to do. So for those reasons, I support the universal masking. And I hope that nobody ever has to go and, and, and go through what I did a number of years ago. This was nineteen seventy-eight. So it's been a long time, but I still remember. I still know his birthday and his date of death. And I, you know, stay with you. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion because I think it will keep our students and staff safer. Not a hundred percent maybe, but safer. Thank you. Any other comments?
What else I'd like to say, I understand the fear of the enormous human nature. But the fact that this kid is not perishing from COVID, maybe with COVID, but these kids have severe underlying conditions. According to CDC or the National Department of Health, the rate of hits is point zero 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 three percent. We're going through all this, perhaps we know these are.
And tell it to your child. That's, that's the problem.
It took them months and a half to get to recover.
Alright, so I, I don't want to get in an argument. This is discussion on the motion. There's no other discussion on the motion? There's no other discussion on the motion? I will call for a vote. This will be a real call vote. If you call a vote, please.
Kristy?
Yeah.
Robbie?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Scott? Motion does.
The motion carries. So everybody here and out there listening in, pass the word out. We'll get the word out through the means that the school has to put messages out. Mask it on Monday, and we'll be looking for your permission to support the pool testing so that we can help our students in school and active in activities.
We'll paper be going home.
Yeah, we'll be sending, we'll send, yeah, we'll have to get that, once we get on boarded with pool testing, then that paper's.
You don't have to participate.
Yes, ma'am.
So in order for my son to be able to participate a hundred percent of school and school activity, he has to be part of the pool testing.
If, yes, if in fact he becomes a close contact through the, through the system, if he's part of pool testing and it comes up in the pool, then he will be able, and he would, he would be able to participate in school activities.
The only way he would put in to be able to, obviously, he would, of course.
Right, I mean, if he was identified as a one with COVID.
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, no, he's not going to participate.
Well, right, right.
Even though they're universally masked.
So we're talking about close contacts that are involved in pool testing. If they're a close contact and they're not in pool testing, they do not have to quarantine if they don't have. But they cannot participate in school activities. That's the real key between pool testing and just universal masking. So if your student doesn't participate in any school activity afterwards, doesn't want to attend any functions, then the pool testing will probably not provide any benefit for them. But if they want to participate in a sport or a robotics club, or drama, or tutor farmers, or anything that we offer, if they're not in pool testing and someone in that group, in that they're, that they're a close contact with has COVID, then they would not be able to participate in those activities. That's the real deal. We're going to have to get that information out and explain clearly to the community as part of our information on what pool testing is going to do. Yes, Kathy?
I just want to make sure clear that if you are not participating in pool testing and you are deemed a close contact, you do have to quarantine.
Thank you.
Even if they're masked, not under masks?
If they're masked, it's a, it's not taking that. So if you participate in pool testing only, right, or if, if you're not wearing a mask, well, we decided we're wearing universal masks.
It's universal masking, so that's.
But if it was, if it was a school system and you were just pool testing and you were close contact, you would have quarantine. But now that we're universally asking, you will just have to do the quarantine outside of school hours and outside of community quarantine.
Which is another decision, we don't really have a say in that. That's not our policy. That is the guidance that goes out there.
Yeah, so pool testing allows you to do after-school activities that are school norm.
So universal mask allows my child to stay in school, if I believe that is a close contact or not.
Correct.
Regardless of participating in pool testing.
Correct, correct.
So there's no more green, yellow, red.
Correct, as of Monday, sorry, Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you clarify then for the rec, because rec is not part of school? So because I have, I have parents that are saying that they are close contact and that they can't practice or play rec. Well, rec is not a part of the school, so that's where I need clarification for kids.
Right, the guidelines, the guidelines are that they can participate in school or school-based functions if it's pool testing, but they are not allowed to participate. They should quarantine from outside activities, community-based, which would be the rec program. That's not our, we're not making that policy. That's not us. That's, you know, that is, and we don't police it. We don't have a way to police it.
I just needed clarification for the parents.
So we can tell the parents that this is, the parents, we tell the parents, your child is to be quarantined from community-based activities for fourteen days or ten days.
Ten.
And then if they do it, they do it, hopefully they would, they would follow that guidance. But if they don't, we're not policing it. We're not going to check that box off. That's, you know, that's, that's not ours. We don't, we can't take on that responsibility.
I just wanted clarification for parents who may not see.
Right, so, so your organization should set the ground rules on whether or not if you're notified that, or a parent is notified that someone's a close contact, what your actions are going to be, whether you're going to allow them to participate or not. That's your organization's responsibility. That's your organization's responsibility.
So we'll still get notified.
And we can notify the rec by law. We notify the parent, child was a close contact.
Yeah, it was still required to notify everyone that they're close contact. Um, it is still recommended if you are being in close contact to be monitoring your symptoms for those ten days as well as getting tested in the first three to five days after your last day of school term. Um, so we'll, parents will, we'll get all that information and we do have, um, that information on the website as well that when we direct people to their close contact, we need to follow those guidelines.
Okay. Nikki?
I, I work with our school system and just as we, we have universal masking and we have a specialist who's all that. These are students, we notify all parents, all that are in close contact, you know, and all not being certified.
All right, so we're gonna move on. I thank you all for your participation. Uh, if you carry the word around the community, please carry it correctly. You know, this is recorded, they can watch it so they can get the information there. Hopefully, some of the questions and comments that were made out into the audience without the mic will be able to pick up or they'll be able to interpret based upon the response. So we're gonna move on to new business. Seven one, seven point one, presentation, the RSU for induction mentoring and certification handbooks.
So, uh, we do have Jack Carney here. Mr. Carney is a teacher at high school, but he's also the chair of the support, oh, I know that, can you give me the accurate?
Yes, so, uh, thank you for the introduction.
Might wanna get a little bit closer. Do you extend it or over? Or bend over, you don't get a, a grip in your back.
So, um, I'm chair of the local credentialing committee. Fruition, I mean, refer to certification, certification is essentially a teacher's license to teach. And every school district or committee like we have, we have educators and making sure that their certification is up to date. Uh, for the clean teacher, to the, to the fifty-five years. Educators, I remember, fifty-five years, it's good to track that and assist them in that process. And so, um, the first document, the RSU for certification handbook, was recently updated, it was a two-year process. I guess maybe the best way to, to think about it or look at, look at it or the visual way of each five, there's a nice little chart there to take a look at. Like to take a look at that and all that, I know there's a lot here, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, and then the committee reviewed it two weeks ago. But I'm certainly anxious about it. There's also an instruction, I'm sorry, induction mentoring handbook. And this is the one that provides, which is sort of new to the RSU, especially teachers with less than true experience. And really outlines in detail requirements for mentors, requirements for teachers, mentoring and whatnot. I'm happy to answer your question. Yeah, this handbook also provides, but I'm certainly a little hesitant to answer any questions that anybody might have about either.
Oh, sorry, I just would say, I think it's important to note that, uh, that these are required by law. Uh, required to have these, um, we've had an update for them in a long time, and so that's why they're required.
Yep, we've always had the same ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, no, yes.
I appreciate that, the new board members, if you go to look at these, if you follow them, that said, for open access, yeah. Yeah, and also for those staff that have been with our people, um, for potential, not taking them.
And I'm glad you said that, because it really is about, it's not just about supporting, it's also about, it's also good policy for our school district to be teachers in this, absolutely.
Any other questions? So I guess the other question, so this is the presentation on it. I guess we do the question once a motion has been made to go to approve them. But if there's any other questions on the presentation. I thank you for your work and everybody on the team. Move on to seven point two, entertain a motion to approve the RSU number four, induction mentoring and certification handbooks. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, then we'll take a vote. This will be by roll call also, please. Uh, Nikki?
Yes.
Uh, Kristy?
Yeah.
Robbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Uh, Joe?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Scott?
Sure.
Motion carries. Thank you. Seven point three, discussion, the future of the collaborative planning team. So I can just kick it off real briefly, but there's been some discussion about if there is a need for the collaborative planning team, and if so, its composition. The collaborative planning team was put together basically as a requirement for the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year opening. Uh, and then that expired because it was guidance, just basically for that year. We maintained it because it provided, uh, an opportunity for a group of people had it, that had been involved and were aware of the processes in place to go and look at information and data that has changed over time uh, and to make a recommendation to board. Their recommenda, is just a recommendation, it's like every other committee we have. Personnel committee makes recommendations on policies. Finance committee makes recommendations on financial things, facilities, improvements, et cetera, come to the board. It's actually, as you see tonight, it was a board discussion, the board makes those approvals. So, and because we tape them and it's open, anybody can see them, uh, the time it's taken by the CPT to go and look at the data, discuss it in a committee, which means there's no really outside interference going on during that meeting, so it's an open exchange, it can be done. And then people can view it afterwards, and that includes board members that aren't there, and community members, obviously. And then a recommendation comes to the board. And then the board discusses it and decides whether to accept the recommendation, modify the recommendation, or not take it at all. So because there's been some comments from individuals that the board is, uh, that committee rather, is no longer, uh, necessary, um, then we thought that the board should kind of reauthorize it. It was a board's decision that we, I mean, we had to have it, and the board kind of decided we'd just kind of keep it, keep it going, and would need, it would make its recommendations, and it can get together and view the data on a fairly regular basis. So we'd like to kind of throw this out for discussion of the board members on whether or not they believe the CPT uh, should be maintained, and if so, uh, do they believe that there's some changes in either how it's configured or how it operates? So at this time, I'll throw it out for comments.
Okay, I'm sorry, since I'm a leader of the direction this year. Um, the difference between CPT and other things. I refer to it as a super and a person. Now, to those who are in the, the community, I think when the past or something, they take the organ of the board and the administration. Um, we can see that with the COVID term, a lot of the community for our board to put together a plan. Um, depending on what game type, the kind of, the amount of, of impact. Um, what I would like to see, there's a couple of things. Firstly, uh, removing many board members from the CPT committee, that the, it's a compromise, it's just, it was essentially not a board member the ability to vote for the last one, and then also when it's presented to the board, sorry. Uh, we can see some, sort of a reduction in the administration. Uh, we just, we have more, uh, community members, more specifically parents, guardians. Uh, and also teachers. I think you can say, um, parents and teachers. Uh, I also think that we should look at changing out of these members, you can't just have them, if you're similar to them, definitely. We should maybe look at changing out, whether they're able to lie and hold these. I think I also work from the board, because CPT committee, it's often, it's difficult to argue.
And thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Other comments? Questions?
I, I think that the committee is, I think it's an asset that we definitely don't wanna lose. So the simple fact is that whether how it's configured or who's on it, I don't really think, uh, is that big of an issue. But I think we need to have buy-in with as many people as we can get, as many groups as we can get. So if there's a change in it, I, I would support that, uh, but I think it's an asset that we, that we need to keep.
Okay. I also commented, I think, in the past that we were a little bit administrative heavy. Uh, and I helped make the suggestion that we bring on some community members, which we did in the spring. We added some community members in there that we didn't have initially. We do have two, uh, teachers. Uh, the school nurse is usually there. Uh, and high school student, but we, they didn't have a high school student, hasn't been, wasn't there, wasn't. So, you know, not everybody attends every time. So it's wait. Now, every committee that we have has a board member on the committee, right? And none of the board, none of the committee members are elected, they're actually appointed by the chair. They ask you each year, annually, what committees you wanna serve on. I think Robbie's been facilities or finance for, except when he was the board chair, most of the time. So, and we have to remember that the board, whoever's on the board at any of these committee meetings isn't speaking on behalf of the board. They're speaking for themselves as a board member, and then they bring the report or the recommendation to the board. So I don't know that it's a plus or minus having a board member on there. You know, I don't, I certainly don't have to, I was asked to be on it initially, and I agreed as a board chair. It would be in put together, we had to have it. So, yep. What I would, what I would recommend, because, uh, is, is that we send your recommendations and to Andy, or do you want somebody else to be?
No, I, I will take this, I was actually gonna say that. So I think, you know, I would like to, you would send me your recommendations, and then we can put together a framework to bring back to you what it would be, if it's collaborative planning.
I can't hear you.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
I finally request, uh, for the CPT is that, um, for those of us who don't intend to be, or are eager to watch it, that somehow, uh, those on the board could get minutes of it prior to the game or report out, to be sure they're not all, um, and also find out rates from that, so you can get that. So it would be really nice to have that.
So we haven't really taken minutes, I don't guess, I think we just recorded it, left it out there. We don't take minutes at most of committee meeting. So I guess if the board, if the C, so if the CPT is going to make a recommendation, that perhaps that would be communicated? Kind of what the outcome is, not necessarily minutes.
Correct.
All right, to capture all of it. If anybody had any questions, maybe they go back to Stan's and we'll look at that one particular thing. All right, but send those recommendations into the superintendent, your ideas and thoughts about the, the formation of it. Uh, they can kind of put it together and bring it back to the board. The board can look at it and say, yay or nay, or, or tweak it. Uh, so that we feel that, just like we do with our other committees, I think we feel pretty well that the recommendations that come from our other committees uh, are well thought out and are usually accepted by the board. So we'd like to have that same sense of belief that the CPT that's gonna be out, is gonna make the best recommendations they can to provide the safe and educational environment, because that's what it's about, that's their job, uh, the CPT, uh, that they can for the students and staff. And then we'll get it, we'll discuss it. So that would be the next step. CPT is not scheduled to meet again currently. So I don't expect it will be before the next meeting in its current situation, and then we'll be able to determine then, hopefully, what it's gonna be before it does meet again. All right? Thank you. Yeah, you can probably give a little bit better numbers.
Uh, so, three building principals, Marco Ben, Jamie, uh, special end director, Miss Byer, Jim Palmer, Norbertine Odette, Ben Reynolds, Catherine Martin, Randy Grant, Brenda Shane, I'm sorry. Uh, Will Fessenden, community member, also, you know, Sherry Rosenoff is a community member. We also have, that's a student, and, um, Jody Gray is a nurse, Jeremy Young is a teacher, and Heather Libby is a teacher.
And I was there.
And Bob. I feel like it was, twelve?
Twelve. In essence, they're there specifically as a community member. I mean, I'm a community member too, but I was there, not representing the board, but myself on there as a board member.
Or the parents or teachers, right? Just yourself.
What's that?
Or the parents or teachers can make that comment, that you vote on your opinion.
I, that CPT, yes.
Yeah.
All right, because I'm not, I'm not representing the board there, just like everybody that's there. I can't say that the building administrators are voting for half of everybody at their building, nor are our teacher representatives both speaking for the association, they're speaking for themselves. So on there, we were all kind of speaking for ourselves and what we believe the information let us be. Right, that is.
Not after, but we can move on. I vote based on what I hear, parents and teachers are for, so I'm here to represent them. And I feel like as a board member or any team member, you should take that to consideration as well, and here you don't. I think everybody in this room, and anybody on Zoom, and every chap there in this community needs to know, you're not representing any of them. That's not okay.
That you're bidding, and you're entitled to it. So are there any other, so now we're gonna move on to the approval of the first reading?
Can I back up for a sec?
Yeah.
I will bring back the framework to our next meeting. So would you like? Yep, okay, just wanna make sure.
All right. Seven point four. Entertaining a motion to approve the first reading of the following policy, E E B, remote participation in school board meetings. Is that a motion? Moved by Nikki? Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second. Who's in second? Discussion.
So just to go over where this is, it's a required policy now by law, just passed in the last session, uh, so it is.
So Andy, the question I have is that board members should attend board meetings.
Yes.
Unless they have the, uh,
Unless they have these excuses?
Yes.
For attention.
Yeah, we still, we still have to meet in person, but there are, are ways through this policy that a board member, if they meet the criteria within this policy, could attend and vote, uh, remotely. There are pieces of it is, when we do that, we should have somebody come with only, we do have to take a roll call. Yep.
Any other questions? Comments on it? And then, so this is first reading, you'll have an opportunity, if you look forward more and have other questions, to go and address those when we bring it back to the second meeting. So if there's no other comments or questions, and all those in favor of the first reading? All right, thank you. All right, committee reports, finance and facilities.
Uh, yes, thank you, the financial facilities committee met today at 5:45, and, uh, we went over the financials for two months of the budget, which would be up until August 31st, which is 16.66% of the budget. Year-to-date, we've received $3,377,716, which is 15.74% of the budget. And expenses, year-to-date, we have expended $2,976,173.98, which is 15.22% of the budget. Uh, and audit is just 99% finished, and we'll be meeting with the auditors when they finish that up, and Hank will be coming to give us the preface. Yep. On the facility side, the update on the softball field, fourth fields will be back Monday for the, uh, final leveling out of the infield. And then I would imagine, not long after that, plan CTE?
Yes, yeah, they're also going down to middle school every day.
Oh, yeah, down to middle school, sure, yep. Uh, update on the Oak Hill Middle School generator, the pad port was bored, and, uh, Cody Crane will be setting the transfer switch in mechanical room on?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Uh, update on the octapack, they'll be coming in to talk to staff and administrators, and that's still moving forward. And on the miscellaneous side, we have hired, like Glenn said, three new bus drivers and filling out more applications. That's it.
Thank you, questions? All right, personnel policy committee, at this time?
For the next, uh.
And CIA technology committee?
We did not.
All right, board member comments? No board member comments tonight?
I guess I just would like to reiterate the fact that, you know, I hear how we're invested in, uh, all kinds of things. I think we're, we're trying to process all that, for every person's perspective, to really understand what's going on. And what I keep coming back to is, reality is, it's not kids. It's meeting school, and it's frustrating, as things are. Think back to last year, this time. Now, again, the framework keeps changing, and we're doing the very best that we can as much of the institutions, and teachers, and the kids, and the parents are. But, to be, be reminded that, about the analogy of being the door to the wall, I mean, that's what it feels like a lot of the time for us. We're trying to be very best in representing and doing what's right for the kids. But there are a lot of things that we don't, as a board, and as schools, and as administrators, have control for because of other people setting the ground rules and then moving that wall that we're trying to nail instead of gel with it. So, just take, take every moment in support of kids, because that's what it really costs.
Any others?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that, as far as our administrators and teachers go, that I know everybody's lives are busy, and of course, somebody's problem is always the biggest problem in the world. But when you have three or 400 students, you have, you can have three or 400 problems. And a little patience goes a long way, and sometimes, listening to the problem before talking about the problem is a big help. And I think our administrators and teachers deserve that consideration, most definitely. It's, it's not the job they get into, to play referee, but it's the job that they have to do. So a little patience goes a long way.
All right, thank you. But none others, I, we just like to remind everybody that our administrators, including the superintendent, don't make the policies, we hire them, we charge them, we carry them out. So, if you call the building principals or the superintendents and it's about a policy, don't yell at them or, or believe that they're the one who made the policy, and it's their fault that it's happening. Policies are done by law by the board, so the board is required to establish policies, that's what we do. And so it's the board's policy, the superintendent and others are hired to carry out those policies, including the education of our children, so. Little patience with them, they're hearing not only from you, but maybe 1,100 other people the same day, if everybody's having a bad day. So, as Robbie said, patience. We'll get back to you, I'm sure they hear you, there's a lot of things going on, uh, and they're doing their best. So, with that being said, there's no executive session, and if there's no objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. All right, thank you all, thank you all, both on Zoom, online, on YouTube, and in Twitter.